All right, it is 6:01. We're going to call the Planning Commission of Monitor Township, March 4, 2025, to order. Let's stand for the pledge.
To the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Connie, would you like to do roll call?
Yep. Peckham?
Here.
Baller?
Here.
Reader?
Here.
Schweitzer's here. Walsh?
Yes.
Shablock?
Here.
Rosenbrack?
Uh, he's absent. He's excused.
Excused.
Yep. All right, have you had a chance to look at the agenda?
Move their agenda be approved?
Support.
Go ahead. All right, we've got motion and support. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carried. Minutes?
I'll move the minutes be printed as, or be accepted as printed.
Right. Support.
All right, support by law, yeah, okay. Um, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? All right, motion carried. All right, now's your chance for public input. If anybody would like to step forward, if you have anything to say about our agenda or anything else, step forward. You can leave your name if you would like.
The agenda for Monitor Sugar, I mean Michigan Sugar.
Yes.
Yes, they're on the agenda, yep.
I have something.
Yeah, yeah.
My name's Deborah Bellhorn. I live three houses away from the main gate. And I know they want to be-
Lower that mic a little bit, you're talking into it, thank you.
I know they want to add on, and they keep adding on. Well, we live right there, and we have no relief from them between the mud and the dust and everything else. First, I want to say, I'm going to read this because I will get upset about it. I want to say thanks to Michigan Sugar for continuing to create employment to our residents in our community, and even though it's taken a few decades to address the offensive odors generated by Michigan Sugar, this has gotten much better over there in our area. Yes, it's still there, but it's not as continual. Now, my frustrations are the dust and mud situation. The sweeper only pushes it around, stirs up huge dust clouds which cover everything in the area, inside our house and outside. I'm worried what's in this fugitive dust. It smothers my garden, covers everything. I can't even grow a garden, it dies. The noise is 24/7, putting a new plant, anything in there, it's going to just create more. The plant itself creates noise all night long, and the trucks are constant and unbearable at times. Michigan Sugar built a road in the back of, at the back of our property line to put in rumble strips on the road, big rumble strips. You can hear them, it sounds, it's horrendous. You hear it all the time. The community tried to get us, the speed limit lowered a few years ago, but instead they raised the limit on Euclid Avenue. Now, the trucks leaving the gate aggressively shift trying to come up to 45 miles an hour speed, and those going into the gate have squawking brakes, and a lot of times they use jake brakes, which they aren't supposed to do anyways, but they do use their jake brakes. With all the truck movement going on, our windows and pictures rattle on the walls. We have to have our TV up so high to have it, to be able to hear it. We're sitting right on the road, basically. They went and, uh, okay, the main gate, why did they change where the main gate was? When the main gate was up by the offices, it only had to go by like four homes to disrupt them. Now that they change it, it goes past 33 homes coming from Salzburg down to the, the main gate now. The most obvious strategy seems like they should have had, left it at the main gate there where they'd just bother four people, build up the curb where they can have parking for the trucks, and then use the Hotchkiss Gate, which only bothers five houses there, I think. And then keep the traffic off of the rest of Euclid and Salzburg, because in all, you're bothering 70-some houses just because they changed that gate. When the new, oh, and when the new road was put in, they put new curbs in. I told people we have a double driveway. We have a two-and-a-half story garage, or a two-and-a-half car garage, and it's two stories. We had a double driveway for 30-plus years, 40-plus years. I told them, "We have a double driveway, we have a double driveway, we have a double driveway." I come home from work, we have a single driveway, and then it's the smallest one of all the single driveways. They put the turn lane right in front of our house. The three houses, they put, they took our whole shoulder, made it into a turn lane. So for me to get my mail, I have to actually go on the road and get my mail. When I'm weed whacking out front, three times I almost got taken out by a semi truck. They don't care. They just get in that turn lane if they even use it. If I'm out there, they'll use it, but if you're not, they don't even use it, bother using it at all. It's, it's just so constant, day in and day out. It's, oh, and they put a storm drain behind the curb on our property. Water can't even get to it unless it floods up our driveway, which it does, because the grade of Euclid Avenue now is higher than our properties. It floods up, we have ankle-deep water at the end of our driveway all the time, and it can't get in the storm drain until it gets high enough to go in there. But I'm thinking they took away our double driveway, for some reason, to put that storm drain in there. And why would they put a storm drain behind the curb where water can't get to it? I just, any, any additions they do in there, they just make matters worse. There's more trucks, there's more travel, there's more dust, there's dirt, noise. It's, they need to take care of their neighbors. I mean, I think, isn't it kind of illegal not to have a shoulder on the road right to your property? I don't know. I call zoning commissioners, they don't know anything. They can't tell me anything. They never answer any of my questions about that storm drain. No one will answer my questions. So they have not been a good neighbor. They, uh, why don't they offer us buyouts or something to people that want out? I mean, they should actually own all of that from West Side Saginaw Road over to Euclid, that whole triangle area. Offer buyouts, or offer to clean our homes, or offer us car washes. I can go to the car wash one day, it's back to being muddy. Everything I touch is full of dirt. It's, I can't even call it dust because it's dirt. So I'm totally against them doing any more expansion until they offer us residents some type of relief.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Uh, is there anybody else that would like to speak? Anyone else that would like to speak during public input?
This is also about the sign that's going to be, want to be changed?
The billboard, yep, the billboard, yep. The billboard on US 10.
Yes. Keith Jacoby, 1621 Midland Road. I just lived down the roadways. It's okay if they want to do digital, as long as it will be only at the expressway. We've got signs on Midland Road. If those go to digital, they're going to have a problem that I had with, your house will be all lit up at night. That, you know, we've just got to make sure that there's something put in there where it's only going to be by the expressway, not on the secondary roads. That would be my only input that, you know, it, they do get very bright.
All right, thank you. Anybody else want to speak?
I'll speak one more time, talking about lights. The people who live across the street from the gate, when the trucks leave, they're being shined into constantly, and I, they've complained a lot about that.
Thank you. Anybody else want to speak? Now's your chance. All right, public input is closed. Items for consideration. Terry already spoke, so we'll skip over that. It's the Lamar sign for the billboard on US 10. Is there somebody here to speak about that?
Hello, my name's Jay Kudrow, that's Dan Slaybaugh. We'd like to convert the sign on US 10 in Mackinac. Like to replace the static face with a, with a digital face. On this one, we would not have to do any structural modifications. We have power already supplied there. The zoning is zoned commercial, and I understand that Monitor only allows in the industrial zones billboards. I believe that the sign would conform to the area with Fabiano Brothers there and Frito-Lay's, and the, the new gas station going in along Don Ruger's property on, on Mackinac Road there. We do not plan on doing any digital conversions on, on Midland Road. It would be on the highway on US 10, so. You guys have any questions for us?
Will that, will that face towards the north at all?
No, it will face, uh-
Which one are we doing, east?
Yeah, it's facing east. It's, east pole facing east is what we'd like to.
Yeah.
It's just one side?
One side, correct.
Yeah. It wouldn't support revenue sample side at this point, but the secondary arteries, it's too expensive of a project to do that for consideration.
So there's two signs that are both of that similar construction right next to each other?
Yes.
Correct?
Two structures.
So if we set a precedence by approving this, I would assume that you're going to try and come back for the next sign, once you figure out if that generates enough revenue for you?
Maybe in the future, not likely real quick.
Yeah, I wouldn't say anytime soon.
Because if we, if we move forward with any recommendation, we're setting a precedence, correct?
We already have.
But we've made a modification.
Rich could probably fill us in a little bit better.
Well, I, I read the one about the Menards sign, right? But that was, that's a little different, because that one's in a different situation.
Well, it, it is different because it's in, but it's the same zoning classification, and it was given a special use permit to go to electronic and be structurally rebuilt, with one of the four support columns remaining in place, and the other three being new. What happened on Mackinac and US 10 is Ruger Farm used to have four billboards on that quarter of a mile, three-eighths of a mile strip along US 10, and they came in, I'm going to guess about 10 years ago, with Lamar, and Lamar said, "Hey, we're going to do you a favor," basically. "We're going to eliminate two of those non-conforming signs. All we want to do is expand the two that remain and bring them up to date structurally and integrity-wise, et cetera." So the Planning Commission, again, about 10, maybe 15 years ago, approved that, and the reason it was approved is because it was eliminating two non-conforming signs, and the exchange was the two remaining signs would be a little bit larger, but not twice as big, and they would be more safety-conscious and secure for wind and snow and rain. So now it's, it's totally different in that they request to go to electronic. We've just rewritten, and the board will probably finally adopt it Monday, the sign language, and there is a specific, what you can and can't do with non-conforming signs, and one of the nots is you can't illuminate it. If it's not illuminated, you can't illuminate it. The one at Menards was allowed to be illuminated, for whatever reason the Planning Commission decided back then, but-
I have a question. So you're referring to a while ago when we spoke about this. Now, I remember-
About a year and a half ago on Menards?
No, this was back when Jack Frank was chair.
Oh, sure, sure, okay.
And I thought that we had talked about, just as you said, eliminating some of the signs, bringing it down to two signs, but I thought that they were going to be electronic face.
Was not on the application back then.
Okay.
I didn't, let me rephrase. I didn't check any applications. I got a call from the former chairman of the Planning Commission, wanted refreshment as to what we did back then, and it's exactly what you said, but I didn't check the site plan or the application to see that they wanted electronic at that point or not. My impression and memory, but it can be a faulty memory, is that 10, 15 years ago, they didn't want electronic.
This wa, this wasn't that long, it wouldn't have been that long ago, maybe eight years ago, seven years ago.
If, if it was eight or seven, that's 10 in my book.
Okay.
You ever see my timesheets here? I, I built 28 hours a day.
So, so to further clarify then, since this billboard-
Wait, one, one more thing. So, but I thought we had had a lot of discussion about rules for Michigan and not just our township, as far as sign goes.
Yeah, there's the Michigan Highway Advertising Act. It's federal act, actually, and then there's the state act, that anything that's visible from an interstate highway has to have certain obscuring features and no brightness, and like Mr. Jacoby talks about with the sign next door, they're supposed to be toned down at night, turned up during the day so they can be legible and visible, but not be disruptive to the neighborhood, and not be distracting to the traffic.
Okay, thank you. Sorry.
But this, this sign's already illuminated at night, but not digitized.
Usually when I drive by there at night, I'm sleeping, so I can't tell you for sure. But I think it is just got like bright floodlights on it.
Correct, but-
But not, not, not a flashing sign display.
How does, how does the ordinance, the new ordinance that we're trying to adopt, read it if it's already, I'm just-
It, it would still be required to meet the commercial, because it's zoned commercial where the sign is, and they would have to meet the commercial display features, which is half of a candle power at the property line. Property line's not the issue because it's far, far away. It's just a matter of, I think it's once every five seconds, its display can change. Where in a residential agricultural area, it's like once every five minutes you can change your display. So they also can have a, a static display or a reader board scrolling display on a commercial sign, which, that's what we all worked on here for years on the Planning Commission, before you were here, Andrew, so I'm not saying it's worse or better because you weren't here. Just we've been working on it for years.
Yeah. And how does that differ than Michigan rules? Ours are much more stringent?
No.
No?
No.
We shouldn't be able to make a rule that's any more stringent than that.
We, we can.
That's, and that rolls down from the federal law.
No, but, but we can until they take away our rights to make those rules, like with wind and solar and everything else, so. But, you know, they have to comply with both federal law, state law, and township law. I've never been asked to compare the state and the federal versus the township, but I think ours are more stringent in that we only allow them in the industrial zone. So they would only be allowed across the street on the industrial park or Fabiano Park, which they talked about in the, the Lay's warehouse, all bright lights over there, where they would only be allowed, and I hate to say it for that poor lady back there, on Michigan Sugar's site, which is another industrial site. Then we have the pipeline out on Wilder's Gym, Wilder and Mackinac. That's all, the, the only place the township would allow. Wilder and, and Mackinac is out in the middle of God's country, and so they would never, you know, ever really want to be a sign out there. It's really this location, and the question is, for US Planning Commissioners, what do you want to do with your ordinance? We've just spent several months talking about it again and reiterated that we don't want to have non-conforming signs, be encouraged to stay. But your call, not mine.
All right, thank you.
You're welcome.
Um, Mark, do you have anything you want to add for Don?
I think maybe-
Oh. All right. All right. Do you want, do you want to come up to the mic?
We really don't have too much more to add. Rich kind of covered it all, and I know you guys are in the process of updating that sign ordinance, but, you know, your current sign ordinance, the intent of non-conformities is not to expand them or enhance them in any way, and so because of that, you know, we are recommending a denial. I'm happy to answer any questions if you have any more questions.
Would you repeat what you just said?
Yeah.
Toward the end, you're recommending what?
Yeah, we would, based on what your current ordinance reads, we would recommend a denial, because you're enhancing a non-conforming use in your ordinance, the intent of your ordinance is to not do that. But I know Rich just said that you had also just redid your sign ordinance, but it sounds like it has the same intent.
That, that chapter did not change at all.
Got it.
That's what it is currently today, and if the board approves a second reading and adoption on Monday, it'll still be the same, not encourage non-conforming signs to be expanded size-wise, intensity-wise, wise, or life-wise.
The only thing I have to add to that is I would think that our intention with our sign ordinance would be to protect residents, like he was saying, on US 10. It seems like a logical place to have a digital sign as the future changes.
There, there may be, and unless Mark or Faith have it, I don't have it memorized, on what the setback is for the Highway Advertising Act, but I think it's within a mile or a half-mile of an expressway that they have to abide by the federal rules as well. So it, it's not just Wild West, bright as you want it.
Right, right.
I do not know off the top of my head.
Yeah, we'd still have to pull that out for this after approval from the township, and then we would have to abide by all the rules as well. And you mentioned the brightness. It would be, all of our digital signs have a photo self-equipped with them, software where, based on ambient lighting, it would adjust, like, especially at night, we can weigh down, you know, based on lighting conditions.
And you have a copy of this report?
Yep. I have one more question. What would take, so wouldn't it take rezoning Mr. Ruger's property to bring this sign into conformance then? If he went from commercial to an industrial property?
Yeah, we, we just got the final version of the master plan. The master plan is the underlying foundation for the zoning ordinance. To make it totally legal, you would have to make the Ruger Farm industrial. The master plan contemplates it's going to be commercial for the next 20 years, and there is, as someone said, there's a movement afoot to maybe get some type of gas station, truck wash overnight, whatever, I'm not sure, but to use the commercial aspect of the farm for commercial purposes.
But how about a special use permit?
Special use permits have to be spelled out in the ordinance, and they have to give criteria as to why and how you can grant them. Chapter 16, I believe it is, of the ordinance deals with non-conforming uses specifically, and Chapter 16 allows the Planning Commission to grant an expansion of a non-conforming use after a special use permit public hearing, if you determine that it's not going to increase the like, life or intensity or disruption of that use. We've done that with Serenus Johnson Construction Company. They're in a residential zone, but they're a construction company, and they bought several acres behind them. We allowed them to expand into that otherwise unoccupied area, but they can only use it on their existing property for the existing use. The sign, non-conforming sign, has a specific section of Chapter 15, which deals with signs. Specific usually overrules the general, and so specifically it says, "We're not supposed to encourage it." 1511, yeah, thanks. So you, you could try to get a special use permit, but again, we're butting heads with, one says, "Don't allow it to expand," the other one says, "If it's not too terribly difficult, you can allow it to expand for the size of the property or the use of the building." If you had a building that was built as a manufacturing concern, and it's gone to a apartment house, and they want to go back to manufacturing, and it's zoned commercial, they might be allowed to expand it back into manufacturing, but that's not what we have here. We have a non-conforming sign that they want to go more non-conforming.
But could they apply for special use? That's what they're doing here.
This, this is a special use application here. It's an application, though, under 15.11, which is to expand the sign. It's not under Chapter 16, which is to expand the use, the physical dimension layout. As far as the setback, everything is fine with the sign, where it sits on the property, because we approved that eight years ago, Amy tells me, so I'll go with younger memories as opposed to mine. Eight years ago, that was all approved. Had they come in, and I can't predict what the vote would have been eight years ago, but had they come in and asked for an electronic reader board, it may have been approved, because we were getting two signs taken down. But now we're well after the fact, and a few more miles down the road, and have to decide what you want to do. That was even before Bill was on the Planning Commission, I believe.
That's what it was, I think. I was only here a short time when Jack was on the chairman. So it's, what we're dealing with, it is a sign right now is non-conforming.
It is.
It's been existing for years, and now the difference is they're going to put a digital reader on it.
And it, it has existed for years. I'm not going to say it's the exact same sign that existed for years. I know at one time there were four signs north of US 10, east of Mackinac. Now there are two, and part of the going from four to two was the, I think the Federal Highway Act had increased the separation required between signs. They used to be like 500 feet apart, now they're, I think, 1,000. I'm getting nodding from the, so I, I think that was part of the rationale for granting the special use permit, to make it more conforming, but still a non-conforming sign. Thanks for the nod, that-
There's actually three signs still there, because there's an, there's those two large ones, and there's a smaller one. Now, further closer to the, to the forests or the, the trees, right before Ruger Farm's subdivision. There's another smaller billboard sign there. It might not be yours.
Yeah, it's a whole front sign, and that doesn't have lights on it, so that would be considered consideration.
Technically, there's still three billboards on that, on that stretch, correct? Because I drive by it every day.
I, I sleep every day when I go by, so.
Yeah, it's adjoining property. Yeah, it's a different person.
Well, McKenna's review, he recommended. We're getting to-
Right. Yeah, I read that whole thing today. Well, I'm, I'm going to make a motion to approve the special use permit, being it's, it's existing, it has existed, it's not a new site.
Okay, just to be sure, grant a special use permit for one-sided display of the sign before you for electronic changeable reader board. One side, right?
Support.
So if, if everything goes to you-know-what in a handbasket, they have to come back and ask for the other side's permission again, and we'll have the public hearing again, and we'll find out what the neighbors think.
The way that sign is facing, because it sort of, it sort of slacked.
Yeah, it's facing towards the expressway.
Yes, yes.
So it'll be on the-
There ain't no way you're going to light the other side.
Make, make it in the motion too, Connie. It's going to be on the east side, facing the side that faces east, or-
West, yeah, west, sorry about that. For traffic heading into Bay City.
Okay.
It's going to face towards Mackinac.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Well, we should make sure to have that in the minutes. What, west side?
Yeah, west side.
Facing the industrial park or Siltron or-
Okay, so it's-
Well, you certainly give us plenty of information, that's for sure.
Okay, so a motion by Reader, supported by Walsh, to approve the special use for a one-sided electronic reader display facing west on US 10.
All right, roll call vote.
Baller?
No.
Schweitzer, yes. Shablock?
Yes.
Reader?
Yes.
Peckham?
No.
Walsh?
Yes.
And Rosenbrack? Motion carried.
All right, thank you. All right, next on the agenda.
All right, next on the agenda, Michigan Sugar site plan special use application. Who's here for Michigan Sugar?
My name's Stuart Wilson. I'm a consulting engineer working for Michigan Sugars. And the intention, sorry. We're adding a new extract molasses tank. It's approximately 120-foot diameter, 52 feet high. This is within the limits of the plant, and it's consistent with the other molasses tanks on site. There's going to be an adjacent pump house, approximately 650 square feet, 10-foot high. And we don't see any obstructions different than what we already have within the facility. And it shouldn't add to any sound or anything of that nature.
What about traffic?
It's all going to be piped, so it'll be going to the same truck loading system. You know, some of it gets piped back into the sugar. I'm a structural engineer, so I don't know the entire process. Yeah.
It's an intermediary tank that holds extract molasses products so that it can be reprocessed through the facility again to pull more sugar from it prior to leaving.
Did you say there's a matching tank there now?
Oh, yeah, there's like three other tanks.
Same, same.
Yeah, yeah. You got 56-foot high, 140, 56, 140. All, the other three are 140 diameter, 56 feet tall. This one's 120 diameter, 52 feet tall. And it significantly, there are other structures on it. You know, there's silos that are 156 feet tall.
Permission stacks are significantly tall.
Yeah, right. So relative to the other structures, it's consistent or smaller than a lot of the other buildings on the site.
So you're not going to have additional trucks coming into the facility because of this?
Correct. If anything, this eliminates additional traffic. Without the tank, we still have to store the product somewhere in order to reprocess it back through the facility.
So it'd be back and forth?
It would be back and forth, yes. And storage tanks and trucks or rail cars, et cetera. So the tank allows us to keep it all in the piping network, and utilize pumps and pipes for that transportation.
Is it a new plant you just built? Ain't that for the sugar or molasses?
Yeah, it goes back and forth from the new MDS plant to the factory, the main factory, the sugar factory.
Can we expect any new odors?
Nope, same products that are in there currently.
They're just, they're already getting it, they're already extracting it, from my understanding. I know what the scientific processes are, just looking for an additional storage so they don't have to ship it off-site to bring it back.
Correct.
Yep, I get it.
Is there any additional noise from the pumps systems? Or are these pump systems rather quiet?
They'll be contained in the pump house, but you shouldn't have, you shouldn't be able to tell if that pump is running.
Yeah, and the pump houses, it's a CMU block wall. So the pumps will be contained within a, you know, block. So, yeah, very little sound.
We had just approved one of these, I'm going to say, two or three years ago. It'll probably be eight years. But when they came in for their industrial tax certificate, they, you just added one of these tanks three years ago?
Yeah, yeah, for the MDS project.
I think that one's 54 feet tall, if I remember correctly.
Yeah, I think it's this one right here, so.
How long ago?
50, oh, 2021, when we had the meeting.
I think you nailed that one.
Oh, I got one right. Okay, good.
Were you there, were you guys both there when they, when the molasses tank ruptured?
No, I was not.
I was not yet.
My son worked on that cleanup of that.
Okay, that was not much fun.
Two weeks cleaning up, about, maybe 100,000 gallons of molasses.
Wow, sticky shoe.
Jim, did you have some comments?
That'll be in my backyard.
Okay.
The only comment I have is that I, we listened to the lady here that spoke about various issues that Michigan Sugar has already addressed. The only one they haven't addressed, and I contacted them last year, because the last time they were here, they had a list of things they were going to do. One of them was to put signs up, "No jake breaks." They get pretty noisy at night, and I know that, because I truck in and out of there at 1:00, 2:00 o'clock in the morning, and I hear them all the time. And so I don't know how these people get any rest at all. I contacted the building official, and, correct me if I'm wrong, if you were on this last project, there was like a half a dozen overruns. They haven't, they haven't updated their building permits. And to date, they haven't received their as-built. So that project, as far as the township's concerned, is still out there in limbo. So I think they need to get those things in order before we take on this new addition.
I'm unaware of that. We'll, we'll have to discuss that with Michigan Sugars.
Who'd you talk with then?
I'd have to get the records. It was in July when I called them, because I wanted CJ to get the signs up before the campaign started. He said he would look at it, and it just never went anywhere.
Couldn't the road commission do that?
You got a contribution from the MDOT, which is Euclid's their road, not the county road commission, so.
Euclid is whose road?
Correct. It's a commercial road. It's an M-25, I think, or M-15, I think it is, or whatever.
13.
So.
So the county don't have nothing to do with it? Who painted it? Somebody just painted that road?
Look at me, I didn't.
I've asked everybody, no one will tell me who I even talked to about.
So you guys didn't paint it?
I was not involved with that. I thought we were talking about the MDS structure and the building.
I know the road.
Well, we are.
Right.
The road work that was done out there involved the city and the county, because they messed with sewers, okay? Those people were involved. The curb and gutter thing was a Michigan Department of Transportation. And as far as the rumble strips that she spoke of, those are inside of the plant. Those are governed, I think, and correct me if I'm wrong, by the Department of Agriculture. It allows the trucks to knock their dirt off before they get out into the road right away. Because I know Michigan Sugar has a street sweeper that's altered constantly. Now, what effect? I really don't know.
I have pictures, but I can't show them on my phone. I wanted to get them. I have videos even. They create huge dust storm. I mean, people that live down in Berks area, they're like, "Did you see that wind out today?" It's just nothing but dust. I don't know where, always picking it up. Look at our street right today, it's just nothing but mud. It's constantly mud. You put one little stream of water out with the sweeper, and that's it, it just pushes her out. Our mailboxes are full of it, our drive, everything's just full of mud and dust. Brand-new road, and it looks like I live on a dirt road.
I know they're being addressed. How well, I don't know. But it might be something to consider if you make a motion to approve.
Well, it's almost like we're asking to solve two problems. We're not, we can solve your problem easy, but her problem is a hell of a lot tougher to solve, because they're running a business, and the trucks come in there, they're dirty, but.
They're hauling it out of the back, blast is where most of the dirt's coming from.
Right, right.
Those rumble strips don't do a thing, they don't make noise. Because then they don't, all those trucks don't go on the road. They come through the whole, out there, you know, back where they have all the beets. They don't ride on that road, all the trucks don't go on that road. It's the one road right behind their house, and the rumble strip's there. I mean, they're come across the whole field, and there's just nothing but dust blowing out over there, and dirt. And it's huge, but so what's the point of dust? This is all coming out from roundabout ready fields, you know? All that, it's you inhaling it.
All right, Rich, do you have something you want to add?
Unfortunately, based on what Jim just said, we have outstanding conditions on approval from now, three years ago, which I found I was right, that still haven't been addressed. It may be in your best interest to table it for a month, and have them address the no jake breaking signs, all of the other items Jim and Dave DeGrove had found from the last permit, the as-built prints from the last tank that was installed, so that we have a current set of plans, and that, and they pay all of the. And Dave DeGrove used to ask for an annual fee, and the sugar company sometimes wouldn't pay an annual. An annual lets the building inspector approve multiple building permits, not on a per-basis charge. But if it's going to be 500 for that, 500 for this, 1,000 for this permit, he might just charge 3,000 a year, and give this permit, this permit, and this permit. And they haven't done that. So those are, again, your decisions, but if you want a recommendation, it might be, come back in a month and address all of the issues you have outstanding with monitor township right now. No offense to you, no offense to your design, no offense to the extra height, because we certainly have approved it multiple times on this industrial facility. Or the other thing is, as Bill said, you can approve it and not address the other issues. But if you don't get those as-built prints, nothing says you're going to get them this time either.
Correct.
Correct.
But there's not much we can do for the residents?
Not, correct. Because the lady mentioned, isn't it against the law to not have a shoulder on your property? And the answer is no, that's all highway department and road commission jurisdiction. We can't do a dang thing about it except to feel for you, which we do.
I mean, just make it go and make it into a turn lane. It's only three houses, they made the turn lane.
They had to get permission from either the highway department or the road commission.
Long time ago.
They don't, they don't come for the township for that permission.
They have to, from the know, come up to the call.
Nobody, nobody wants to own up to whoever let them do it. But it's either the state, Michigan State Department of Transportation, that's got an office on Wilder Road between the expressway, or it's the Bay County Road Commission that has their primary office on Beaver Road across from Spring Hills. Okay. Well, we've given the best answers, and I've given it as truthful as I can tell you. Ask Keith if you don't believe me.
I know it's not monitored here. I know that, it's frustrating, like, man.
Madam Chair, I invited the building official to be here tonight. And unfortunately, he's not. He's with his wife into Cleveland Clinic, so he can't attend. I got my information from him on the phone. So I guess if you're looking for a motion, I'll make a motion. We table this for 30 days. Until such time, the following things can be addressed through the building department.
I'll support that.
All right, we have a motion and support.
We need to make a list. What, do you have a list?
Yeah, update their building permits. I'm under the impression there's been like overruns times three. They need to submit their as-built, which is the completion of the project, updating everything to let the township know exactly what exists.
That's from the last project.
Pardon me?
From the last project.
From the last project.
Three years ago.
Is that the two, excuse me?
And the sign?
Yeah, the jake breaks. Yep.
Has someone been in contact with Michigan Sugar, or Michigan Sugar?
I talked to him in July. He said he'd address it. Let me get with Jessica, she'll give me the number.
Is that, was that Mr. Boothroyd you talked to?
It sounds familiar.
We're not saying that we don't appreciate Michigan Sugar's contributions to the neighborhood. We just want to make sure that, that I's are dotted, the T's are crossed from the prior projects, so that we can move forward with sound planning.
Okay, and when we say prior project, we're talking specifically of the MDS structure and the molasses tank that went with it.
Yes.
Okay.
I know a lot of the, a lot of the concerns that she addressed was addressed last time. And a lot of those things have been taken care of. Like the rumble strip that she refers to is basically four pits. As they come out, they're big angle irons, and the trucks bounce on them. That's where the noise comes from. Knocks the dirt and the beets off of them, so they don't get out on the road right away. I know for a fact that the county, or the Michigan Sugar does have a road sweeper that's out there constantly now. What kind of a good job they do, that's not my call, but I see them out there a lot. And I know at night, anywhere from midnight to 3:00 in the morning, I hear the jake breaks. So it's like, you know, if they shut some of that stuff off, I think it would accomplish a lot. As far as that lady losing her driveway, in Banger Township years ago when I was there, the department wanted to eliminate curb cuts. They didn't want all these driveways going down Euclid. So as the opportunity had come about, they would eliminate them. I got a feeling she's in that category, because it goes all the way down Euclid. So she's one of the unfortunate people, I think, that lost part of her driveway.
That's, that's one of the highway department's goals.
Yep.
Is to make shared driveways as opposed to individual driveways. If you had a circle driveway, they would not let you rebuild one of the entrance ways. So if you had a double driveway, that's just the highway department's way of eliminating conflict points and taking one of your turn, turn, into your driveway way. And the highway department sent the township ordinances for us to adopt, so that we would have to enforce their rules, and we refused to adopt it. So that's just the highway department being 800-pound gorilla with you.
Madam Chair, I call for the question.
Yes? You have a question?
Yeah, read it to me. I call for the question. Let's go.
Okay. Motion by Beller, supported by Peckham, to table the request until additional information can be obtained on prior projects, including permits, as-built prints, jake break signs, et cetera.
There you go.
Is that it?
Yep.
Okay.
All right, we have a motion and support. You want to do a roll call vote?
Yep. Reader?
Yes.
Peckham?
Yes.
Schweitzer, yes. Shablack?
Yes.
Walsh?
Yes.
And Beller?
Yes.
Motion carried.
Thank you.
All right, thank you.
Thank you.
All right, unfinished business. 2483 Midland Road rezon request from R1 to commercial.
You can ask the question, but we have to have a public hearing on it, because it's a rezoning. So at some point, the chairman will have to open it up for a public hearing. The benefit, and I don't get paid to be a spokesman, but I seem to do a lot of it, is that you have a sign out in your front yard that is on a residential lot on a commercial corner. And so the, what we just talked about with the billboards, you get a five-minute display, or you get a five-second display. You can do more ad, more signage in a commercial zone than a residential zone. I'm not a sign expert. I just pay attention to some of the conversation here. But as far as I can tell, there is no benefit from intensity, light intensity. There's no benefit from size of signs, no benefit from location in the road right of way or close to the shoulder. The only real benefit between the two zones is the amount of display you can do. Pardon?
Where is that property at?
You're sitting in it. It's in Township Hall.
It's our sign.
Not to scare you that you're sitting in it, because you're all part of it then.
I know, because you might probably go down there, and the water plant, something residential, too.
Yep, yep, but we got the sign in the corner, and that's what they went in.
I don't think it was across the room.
No, it's this one right. The other three corners are already commercial.
So it brings the township hall into compliance?
Right.
Well, bring the, the hall is in compliance, because the hall is permitted in any zone district.
But our signs?
But your signs, so it'll allow you, allow the township board, allow the sign supervisor to do more advertising, more display. I mean, when it was a static sign before it was an electronic reader board, you'd have to go up and change the numbers, you'd do 312 fire runs. A week later, it'd be 322, you know? Now they can every five seconds type in a new message. But we can't change it, other than once every five years.
I'll make a motion that we rezon the request from R1 to C for charter township monitor.
Can we close the public hearing before you make? Can we close the public hearing before you make the motion? There you go.
Let's close public hearing.
See if there's anybody else that wants to speak.
Oh, anybody else wanna speak?
Other than me?
I didn't either. Nobody else wants to speak? All right, we'll close it then. All right, resume.
I'll support that motion.
All right, we have a motion.
Recommend to the township board that they rezone the property commonly referred to as the township hall from residential to commercial.
I'll let you read it back.
I'll support, yes. I mean, it brings us into compliance with our own rules that we're making for everybody else, so. We should follow our own rules.
We'll give her a minute to type.
So, um, motion by Beller, supported by Peckham, to approve the rezoning request from R one to C.
Send it to the board, right?
To recommend to the board.
Recommend to the board.
Because it ultimately rests with the township board.
Do you have our property address?
Two-four-eight-three.
Midland Road.
I think it's East Midland Road.
Twenty-four E three.
But is it east or west? Or just Midland?
East.
I thought it was. I've only done this notice for forty-two years.
Okay. So recommend to the board the rezoning request of twenty-four eighty-three Midland Road from R one to C. Okay.
All right, we have a motion and a second. Do a roll call vote.
Okay. Schweitzer, yes. Shablock?
Yes.
Peckham?
Yes.
Reader?
Yes.
Beller?
Yes.
And Walsh?
Yes.
Motion carried.
All right, next on our agenda is update on monitored properties. Do we have somebody here?
It'd be Mark. Don lies. Monitor properties, as you all may know, is the working title of a potential subdivision across from Menards to the west of, I believe it's the west of Uno's, where there was once a Lowe's plan to go. And the developers have come up with an engineering plan because of the consumer's easement or road right, power line right-of-way and the Dow pipeline that bisects this property. It really only is susceptible of having eight lots south of the utility lines unless you get an easement from both Dow and Consumers. And so they were dealing with the township on a regular basis, including the fire department and myself and the planner and the office. And they got to a point where the fire department said, we're only gonna let you build if you can put a looped system through this new subdivision. And Jim is quite familiar with what a looped system is and why it's needed. And so they ended up getting an easement from Consumers for a ten-thousand-dollar cost, and they sent it to the township to pay. And your chief attorney said, wait a minute, we're not getting the benefit of this. Why do we have to pay ten thousand dollars? So we called back to the applicant, and they said, oh, yeah, we planned on paying it all on. And this is about five, six months ago, and there's been no movement on my end, no movement on Don's end. And Don and I were in somewhat constant contact with them that if you wanna build north of Wilder, you need to loop the water. And there was an easement area, not all the way to the pipeline, but halfway up that would let it tie into the new street that they were gonna build. They wanted to put in two new hotels, new restaurant pads, new mini-storage facilities. And they would go all the way back to the Dow pipeline or the Consumers right-of-way. Everything north of that would be still residential, and the best way to access that would be from Alpine Mobile Home Park off of Two Mile, if you could get easements through the Mobile Home Park or expand the Mobile Home Park. I don't know if they've backed away because they found out they, they can't just drive over Consumers and Dow property without paying the price for them. And the pipeline, Dow is a little bit cautious on who they're gonna let put roads and drain systems and utilities crisscrossing over their pipeline, as I suspect Consumers is. So that's the update. Do you have a print on it, Andrew? Is that this one? So there, there were originally, yep, Melon Drive, originally eight lots proposed. And, uh, under your zoning ordinance, lots have to front on either an approved private street or public street. You only allow private streets in one circumstance, which is not a subdivision. And so they, they had come to Beth Patterson, your assessor for land division approval. And, you know, my comment was, you've got enough frontage on Wilder Road, you can build this street as a driveway to you and put your hotel up, but you're not gonna get another split until you have that as a public road, built and dedicated to the road commission. And I think that might be, the cost is how much a foot, Mark? Hundred and twenty-five, hundred, hundred, yeah, so, I mean, if they wanna go back easily a thousand feet at a hundred and twenty-five, that's gonna be a big chunk just for the road and the utilities and the infrastructure. And they actually were talking about, why doesn't township condemn the right-of-way for us to loop the water? That piqued my interest because there'd be lots of attorney fees with that, but it would not be the benefit to the township. So I think that's where we stand, unless you know something different.
I was just gonna ask you, too, did they ever get any other easements? Because I know if they got across Consumers, that's fine, getting up to the east, but when they're using consumers' property, they don't have any easements tied up.
No, but it, it came over Covenant. So I think the water line was already in Covenant. So it needed to cross. Do you have the, uh, the diagram? That's all I got. Yeah, that, whatever, it, it's kind of turned silent ghost on us. And so that's the update. It's not for township's lack of spending money of trying to get people to invest in the township. It's just all the, all the safety, life safety issues we wanna address, they're not in a position to address.
Well, I don't think they're ever gonna get across that Dow pipeline. They ain't gonna let them build a road over it.
Nor do I think they're gonna let them put sewer lines, water lines, storm sewer, gas, electric, anything.
Now, they, now, now, the Midland Road, well, where I live, on Midland Road, that eighteen-inch oil line that went through there, now, they, they crossed Midland Road, but they were twenty-foot below the line. Then they went to the railroad track, and they had to get, they went better than thirty-foot underneath that railroad track and went underneath the Dow pipelines.
What gas line was that?
It was a, it's an eighteen-inch oil line.
So it's doable, if it's done right? Yeah.
Yeah, but you can't put a road underneath pipes. But they ain't gonna let you go on top of that pipes of the road.
And most, most of the pipe easements, they make you hand dig within ten feet.
Now, but they wanna cross them lines, and that ain't gonna happen.
But if you get within ten feet, you gotta hand dig it. So you can't get the shovel.
That's what they want you to do. When I, when I went by it, I didn't hand dig it. Guy in the back.
Well, you're a rascal to begin with, but.
This property is right across from Menards, right?
Right, right.
On the other side of what, Ponderosa, between that and the highway?
Behind Uno's.
Uno's.
Behind Uno's.
Behind Uno's.
West of Uno's, and it's where the connector goes to Cock Hallen.
Who the hell's gonna wanna live there?
No, it's a commercial.
No, it's a commercial.
Oh, yeah. I thought it was.
No, this is all commercial lots.
Okay.
Restaurant pads.
Myers farms that field.
Pardon me?
Myers farms that field.
Jimmy?
Floyd, right there off Wheeler.
But.
But it's currently zoned agricultural?
Uh, it's master plan for commercial, but I think it, I'm not sure what the zoning is.
I think it is.
You will find this across, if you're here for a while, you'll see this piece of property.
It's always been for sale or something for a long time, so.
We approved the Lowe's hardware on that?
Yeah.
The only expansion to the year. And they went away for this. Wilder and.
It is commercial.
Yeah.
All right, so there's nothing that we need to do with this, then?
No.
No, that's, that's just the update for you that may have heard the gossip about it.
All right.
I have not seen where they've ever sent, the, the surveyor that we've been dealing with said yes, we're always planning to pay for it. He sent the request for the money to the LLC, and that sort of died.
All right.
So we don't have to do anything, we don't have to make a motion?
There, there are, uh, at one time, there was some survey stakes out there. I believe, I believe what Andrew has, and we probably all have, I didn't go that deep into my packet. Yeah, they, they surveyed it. They had it all laid out. Yeah, here they are. They had it all laid out. They even had surveyed where they were gonna put the Fairfield in, which was like the third lot in from Wilder on the east side. And I, I think, but for the fact that Don and I squawked a little bit about us being for your cause. So the question was asked, do we need to make a motion to this effect or accept it as communications? This is only communications. Also, Madam Chair, under communications, I spoke with Don. Last month, we voted to approve the master plan. However, all the changes that were made at our board, uh, I never got copies of. I don't think anybody else in this room got copies either. So I asked Don to give us those inserts so we could put them in here. And it looks to me like he printed us a whole new book, so now I think we're all on the same page.
So this is what's being sent out?
It's already been sent out.
And is this what the, um, is this what your board saw?
You're behind the graph, yeah, it's already gone.
Okay. All right. All right, we got everything, communications?
I'll make a motion to the fact. Support.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
So all that's left.
I'll make that motion.
What, what motion would that be?
To adjourn.
All right, thank you.
Only if you can spell it.
It's right here.
It's written right there.
No, it's I-T.
Motion and support to adjourn.